This morning, I hope everyone is doing well. At this time, I'll call to order the March 1st, 2021 meeting work session of the Stokes County Board of Education. First, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as it stands?
Madam Chair, we'd like to add item H, a calendar committee report.
I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have the consent agenda. Approval of regular session minutes for February 15th, 2021. Is there any discussion regarding those concerns or corrections?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. That also is approving the fundraising request we have here. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Next, we have the discussion agenda. Discussion of Policy 2000 Series. That includes Policy 2127, Board Member Technology Use. We can look at that one first. We also have Policy 2310, Public Participation at Board Meetings.
And Madam Chair, the 2000 series is left on here from the last meeting. As you pointed out, the board did want to discuss these two in particular. I believe Mr. Johnson has made some recommendations on that as well. And we'll proceed by looking at 2127.
Yes, I see that in our packet, we had the original, I think, recommended version. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson? And then the recommended potential changes?
The 2127, we do not currently have this policy. That's why there's not an old one and a new one. This is the newest version, but we do not currently have this as a policy manual. The two things that I think the board needs to pay particular attention to in this policy, on page 1 of 5, section A2, imply the privacy expectations when school system technology resources. There are no privacy expectations. It is subject to public exposure. It is also open to review our school system personnel. The new school system technology resources view are concerning to the use or review our school system personnel. Almost exactly the same way, it's a student board using our school system technology resources. Another thing to take away from there is on the next page, page 2 of 5, the policy makes it to say, if you use your personal device for school system business, be aware that arguably you may have created some type of form so that if someone responds to you on your personal device, you may not be very happy with that response. You can't automatically delete it. Obviously, you can, but if you do, you may be subject to some type of discrimination because of the content of that message. And using your personal devices for school system business, it becomes a code of form, arguably, and you can't discriminate on it. You can reply using your personal cellphone, computer, whatever it can be, you can object to the content of that message, of course, unless it's for saying obscene or something like that. So you just need to be aware of those caveats in policy. And that applies to student employees, whether or not it's for. By the way, I don't use your personal devices for school system business.
I would just ask, I know we haven't had a policy exactly like this, but I know we've had a standard or kind of a known practices. So what have we used as a guide thus far? Is there another policy that reflects or kind of hits on some of these topics?
Basically, we use our code of ethics.
Okay.
Which basically, in essence, means the same thing, but doesn't quite say it is much deeper, or doesn't say it all is much deeper.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the public records request is a law, and whether or not we put that in policy or not, it's still open to public records anyway. So this is a way for board members to be aware of that, of the current law that is already in place that we're under to begin with.
Any comments, board?
We can add it or not. I mean, really, it's not bringing anything to the table, but it does summarize what the expectations are.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we've been flying without it forever, and still, everything in it applies. So other than to match what the School Board Association recommends, we're not really bringing anything new. So I'm good either way.
Thank you, Ms. Messick.
Well, I agree with Mike on that. Even if we use what we've had before, it's still, all this is implied. And so I'm good with either policy.
Mr. Robertson?
Yeah, I think probably the only question I have would be talking about the personal devices. So like on social media, you know, if we post something on social media on our personal page, is that subject, just like it would be if it was a school device? I mean, how?
No, not if you put something purely personal or not related. If you, sometimes if you find out that something that you put on there personally, not in your role as a member of the Board of Education, it would not be subject to this. But if you were, if for example, you were using your personal cellphone to communicate with the other board members or with Dr. Rice regarding school system business, that would be subject.
Or if you were on the calendar committee, and you got home from the meeting that night, and you posted on Facebook, "Had a very interesting calendar committee meeting tonight. I'm not sure what we're going to do." If people comment on that, now it is a forum for school business, correct? Because you've opened that up for school business.
You know, I further reviewed the policy, and you know, I do feel like it breaks it down, like you said, more in detail. I don't have a great, you know, concern over it after further review. I guess my concern was as long as it didn't, you know, just limit what you wanted to talk about, or what you wanted to say on your personal time, on your, you know what I mean, your personal social media, just not trying to inhibit anyone's viewpoints. But it does say on section C, on the four, you know, the fourth page, about board members are encouraged to consult with an attorney to create viewpoint-neutral rules to govern. It says their school system business related to personal social media. So just saying if a board member had concerns or wanted to post, you know, just to try to keep it neutral. Any other?
Don't forget, Mr. Bryant.
Is he on?
Yeah.
Mr. Bryant, can you hear us? Does it show him as being on, Karen? Okay.
Mr. Bryant, can you hear us? We cannot hear you right now if you're talking.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I had to stop to get my phone out. I'm traveling, and I've got, had my phone muted, so the road noise wasn't traveling through.
We were just wanting to know your thoughts on the policy and concerns. Are you okay with it?
I'm okay with everything as long as my personal page is not being used against me for, you know, nothing. I sort of had that incident try to happen before, back at the primaries. So I just want to make sure that the policy's not going to tie me down where something's used, is twisted way around and used against me for political purposes that shouldn't be. That's the only concern I've got. Because if they try to go after you or whatever, if you've got that policy, how? If you don't have the policy, it makes it harder for somebody to try to get a political advantage of you in the political climate that we have today that everybody seems to be trying to do. It's the only concern I have.
I guess that would be a question for Mr. Johnson. I mean, did you get what he was saying? I don't think adopting the policy would further.
Not only would the policy be more protective.
More protective, okay. Yeah, and again, if I'm understanding what he's questioning, none of this applies until you took that oath and it was sworn in as an official. So yes, yes.
Right.
Any other questions, Mr. Bryant?
That's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have to put my phone back on mute and just stop when I need to.
We have one more question.
Okay.
Ms. Buljack wanted to confirm that you voted yes to both of those motions that were made at the beginning of the meeting. We could not hear you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Policy 2310, Public Participation at Board Meetings.
The chairperson, the board, you have three samples that I found from other players. The current policy is that board members may not respond individually to address the board's request for clarification of comments made by individuals. There are three samples of that, the meeting, and other public reports. And then, sort of a hybrid that I can tell for your consideration, which is in the proposed
Can you point out the main differences in that proposal?
The main difference is, board members may request clarification and may furnish specific factual information or reference existing policy applicable to the subject of the topic. The board may direct the superintendent to investigate the information presented and respond accordingly to the president. My thought about that is how do we respond at a meeting to someone who gets up at 12:00 and says something that you know is absolutely false? And is contrary to your policy or something, and it is of such magnitude that you just can't let that false statement sit there in front of the press? It does give you the authority to furnish specific factual information or reference If there's a policy on the non-handled that specifically addresses what the person is talking about, we can certainly refer that person to the policy. If you will reference Policy 318, I think will answer your question, and we ask the superintendent after this meeting to provide a copy of that policy to you for your review, and it should answer your question. Or if they actually say something about an action that this board has taken that is totally being wrong, totally wrong, I've got that in there, may furnish specific factual information to say that it is, that the speaker's information is incorrect. That's just an option for your part.
Mr. Rogers?
If it says no, that doesn't say you require it, because it gives you the authority to do that. Or you may simply say, Dr. Rice, please look into the matter that the board can respond to after the meeting. You've got to be able to, to be able to.
Mr. Rogers, your thoughts, sir?
Having been on the receiving end of a falsehood statement, I still responded as the board chair because it was a personal attack on myself and the superintendent at the time. This would give us the ability to do so. My concern is, if we open it up to multiple interactions, we will hinder our ability to conduct a meeting in a timely manner for everybody else. So we've got to be conscious of what we respond, how we respond, and how often we respond. So I would, you know, hope it would only be used in times of indiscretion. Other than that, it can just be a statement that will get you that board policy for clarification. But it would also allow the board to respond to personal attacks. But I don't know that this is the form. This is a board meeting, not a personal retribution platform. So I'm fine with what Fred put, because it puts in writing what was, what has been done in the past. But we've had this policy for, or we've done it this way for the last, what, 40 years?
Yeah, a long time.
Yeah, so, I mean, nobody can figure out when we started, but we know it was prior to 1980, so that makes it 41 years. So we just need to be very careful. It's never stopped us from responding before the way we had it. We just did it in a concise manner, and saying that we're not going to respond has limited some of the interaction that could, to me, be detrimental to the progression of a timely board meeting.
And I do notice, if I may, that, you know, there is a time limit noted here in the policy, as well as public comments, not to exceed 30 minutes total before the meeting begins, or?
But you could get 30 minutes on the first public comment.
Right.
So then you distract from all the other public comments, because you've hit the time limit.
Okay.
I said, the downside is, you don't want to turn, turn this into a debate.
I mean, if the intention is to allow forward debate, then maybe we add another meeting quarterly, or if it requires it monthly, in a town hall setting. We've done that in the past to allow grievances to be aired in open public, where interaction between two people went. But I don't know of a board that, in North Carolina, or really anywhere, that allows for one-on-one interaction, "Well, we've got a 30-minute time limit. Well, I can take one topic and make 30 minutes out of it." We could discuss this for 30 minutes. So how is somebody going to come in and say, "Well, I didn't get my time," or you get 15 people sign up for public comments at three minutes apiece? That's 45 minutes there.
Well, the proposed policy, after the long paragraph on page 2 of 2, is a short, the second one, it says, "Except in cases of emergency, information received during the presentation will not be acted upon at the time it is received." The board could determine what an emergency is.
And that's in our current policy.
And that's in the current, that's in the proposed policy and in the current policy that, you know, if, if the board, you know, if somebody gets up and makes a defamatory remark, that could be considered an emergency that needs to be addressed. If it's, you know, back, I think, a couple of years ago, when the students from North Stokes came and wanted to talk about honors at graduation, we immediately went into, because it was time-sensitive, graduation was coming, the board briefly discussed it and asked us to act on it, to fix that. So there have been times when the board deemed it an emergency and did respond or act. And so that, again, that's already there. Without opening it up for a debate for 30 minutes.
Right.
Ms. Messick, any concerns?
Well, I'd just like to read, yes, my concerns. I would like to go on record to oppose changing Policy 2310, Public Participation at Board Meetings. We are now following the North Carolina School Board Association guidelines, and we've been following that for 41 years for Policy 2310, and have been since the policies have been adopted, as far as I know. When a board member speaks their opinion, oftentimes, the public may interpret that board member's opinion for all the members on the board. If complaints come before the board during the open forum through public participation, and a board member is on record with their opinion, and this conversation goes to a hearing or grievance, that board member would have to recuse themselves. A board member during these proceedings could make promises they couldn't keep. A board member could make a comment that could come back to them in court. Everyone tells one side of the story during public participation. It could possibly start arguments between participant and the board members, resulting in hard feelings. This is for the total board's protection. We want to be approached as a board instead of as an individual member. And just because you can do something, doesn't mean it's wise. I feel like that we are a board, but the board goes under the guidelines of the North Carolina School Board Association, and we can't just do things that we want to do a lot of times because of the School Board Association, and also because of the Department of Public Instruction. You know, a lot of times, people come up and they'll say, "Why don't you do this? And why don't you do that?" And you have to come back and say, "We are under guidelines from Raleigh, from the Department of Public Instruction, from the North Carolina School Board Association. We don't fly on our own." And so that's why, but I do see some of the changes that Mr. Johnson has provided here. And I don't think that it's that much different, do you, than the other policy? But if I had my druthers, I would just stay with the policy we have. That's me. Thank you for allowing me to respond.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. And you 100% like the current policy as is?
Well, I do like that current policy. We've been following it, and we're not the only school boards following that. Look at all the school boards throughout North Carolina, and so I do.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
I do like the revise that Mr. Johnson has provided for us. And I don't think it's one of those things where every time someone comes to speak it, we're going to engage in conversation or, but I would like for us to have the opportunity to do that. You know, these people come for public comments, they take time out of their schedules, they came over, and if they come to give us a public comment, it is something that's important to them, that's something that's on their mind. And I'd just like for us to be able to respond to that and not be limited if we, you know, feel like we can't respond. Not saying that we would do that every time, but I don't want to be hampered by the policy that says that, you know, if, you know, that we can't respond to, you know, whatever the person's making a public comment about. I don't see that it would be something that we would respond to every time, but I do like it if we have the option. And I do like the guidelines that's in the proposed revision. And maybe it gives a little bit more information to the, to the person doing the public comment. So that's, I would, I would be more in favor of the revision, just so that it maybe gives us a little bit more freedom to do, to make a comment if we'd like to, more than anything else.
Thank you.
That's all.
Can I ask for one quick question? Just as, as we're thinking about adopting the policy, and I've got, I like what we've got, I don't have a problem with this, but how do we respond as a group when it's an individual response?
That was what I was.
You may respond in one way, and I may respond in another, and Cheryl may respond in the third, and Pat gives a fourth opinion, Mr. Bryant gives a fifth, well, now we've just responded with no clarification as a body.
As a body.
At that point, we've just given an opinion, no different than if I see him at Ingalls.
Right. And I was thinking the same thing. I don't think we'd want to get into every single board member responding to a concern or complaint or whatever. I think you probably would want the, you know, if you're in agreeance, the chairperson to respond, and I think we would want to have, you know, a statement that we agree upon. It mentions here, "At any time, the board may establish additional procedures..." It, it mentions here, "At any time, the board may establish additional procedures to ensure the public comment sessions proceed in efficient and orderly manner." I mean, you know, it could...
How do you, how do we develop a statement and get it to the chair that's approving of all of us if it's happening live in the moment? Again, I'm not against change.
It would be the statement of the chairman, you know, whether we all agreed or not.
I think you keep it generic and a follow-up, you know, and you either ask Dr. Rice if he can elaborate on specifically school procedure and, and go from there. It does open up the line of communication, you know, a little bit more than what we currently do. But I do see what you're saying. I mean, any thoughts, concerns, Dr. Rice?
There's been a lot of great discussion and debate about this, and that same thing could happen here in the middle of a meeting with a point brought up. I think, you know, acknowledging people, thanking them for their time, thanking them for coming is appropriate. And asking a follow-up question if you don't understand something, I, I believe is appropriate if the board were to, to want to adopt something along those lines. I mean, I, I can't think of a, a good example of that at this moment. But I think, you know, a point of clarity is, or we would like Mr. Rice to get, we, Ms. Goldjack, would you please get his info, contact information?
Right.
So, we can get this further discussed and get a report back to the board. I think all of those things, I believe our current policy allows. And again, during an emergency, that's a vague term, if you will. I think that gives the board some, you know, the authority to do what would need to be done in an, again, as the board deems an emergency. So, I believe we could do everything we need to do now with the current policy. But I, I do like the fact of at least acknowledging, "Thank you for your time." When it's just quiet at the end and they walk away and say, "Okay, now, we move to the..." I, I think that's kind of cold. So, I agree that, you know, a general thank you, ignore, now, maybe not easy to say thank you if somebody just blisters the board, but "Thank you for coming and sharing your opinion and being a part of the open meeting process. Thank you very much."
That's along the lines, I guess, of what I was thinking, like a generic, you know, statement on behalf of the board or something, but...
We've not done that before. We've not just...
Well, we have at times, and at times we've not.
Yeah, but we have sometimes done that.
Right. We did it at North Stokes, and we did when the last round of school closures was a personal attack.
The, there have been a few times when somebody's come spoke at public comments where we've just moved right on to the next topic and, and done it, and that, again, those times kind of feel a little cold. I don't think it's been too often, but it has happened, I believe. But I think just always to acknowledge that was, is polite.
And that the chair could do because they're not, they're thinking them on behalf of the board, but they're not generating an opinion on behalf of the board. And perhaps it's something as simple as, in the, except in the case of an emergency, reword that to, except in the case of a time-constrained matter. Emergency sounds like something's on fire and we've got to go put it out. And it could just be, "We need to act before the board meeting and, and get a little clarification." Am I... Well, I don't know. I just pulled it. I heard it says emergency.
Yeah, nobody says that.
To ask. Yeah.
But yet, you want the board as a body to respond if necessary to the present. So, in all of me, the board members may seek clarification, but the board is the one that directs the superintendent to respond later if needed with policy references or if there's a specific factual reference that is incorrect. It's the board that responds for that and not the individual member. So, I agree. Let me reword this. Incorporate, to incorporate also this part about the cases of emergency to try to clarify that. Because you're right, if I'm not mistaken, in relation to the North Stokes issue, we immediately amended the agenda...
We did.
To put that on there because it was so time-sensitive. So, you need to...
Should we include, you know, that agendas can be amended? Because, you know, public comments typically fall where in regards to approval of the agenda?
Before.
Before. So, you know, should we include, you know, with the motion and a two-thirds vote, you know, the agenda can be amended to include a pressing issue, you know, upon whatever? Or a vote, yeah.
Do we need to also include a, make sure we include a strong statement about personnel because the last contentious portion of public comments that this board has faced was about contract renewals for a board member? Neither one of which can be discussed in open forum. So, you really, I mean, even if you're asking, if you're asking a question about a contract renewal, then you're discussing personnel in open forum, correct? And that's a no-no.
You can't do that.
Well, Doug's behaving now. We're good. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, my concern is that if each board member responds, and see, if one board member responds and the rest of us don't, then it makes us, as other board members, feel like that to the speaker, we don't really care, but maybe we do.
I mean, I'm not opposed to that if, if it occurred, you know.
Well, that would go to closed session, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Right, but that could ensue an argument, too, you know. And that's what I don't think would look good for the board. I think we need to be unified as a board, not as just an individual comment and... And that's why I think the policy was adopted a long time ago. But I'm not opposed to your revision, Mr. Johnson. I didn't mean to sound like I was. Right. Now, I appreciate your efforts. I do. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Can I also make one more suggestion? Since we are pushing it towards the chair, like we did with the all-staff emails, we need to have some bite to keep a current or potential new board member from just making a statement on behalf of the board that is misconstrued or not, does not maintain the, the whole governing body's opinion. So, that prevents...
Mass emails?
Mass email, well, mass, whatever the chair says comes on behalf of the chair and is supposed to be representative of the board. If the chair doesn't agree with something and still makes that statement, there needs to be a little bite behind it that, "No, you can't do that." Just like, I never sent an all-staff out last year without contacting every member and having a majority. So, the chair, in essence, could make a statement now that hits the press based on their own personal feelings without the vote of the board. So, a thank you, a general questioning statement as a individual board member. But for the chair to just release a statement or a position without polling the entire board exceeds the authority of the chair. And I'm not saying you would do it. I'm not saying I would do it. I'm saying if we're going to fix it, let's fix it from now for the next 40 years, like the board 41 years ago fixed this one.
I mean, I'm fine adding what Mr. Rogers has recommended or correcting a current policy to include that.
Where it ensures that every board member is only expressing their individual perception and that the chair is only stating their personal and not the vote or the position of the board unless a meeting, unless at a follow-up meeting. You get where I'm going? I mean, you're a smart guy. I looked very dapper today, so. Right. That the board chair makes, but the board chair, that should not limit the chair from asking a positional question. But if they make a statement other than a question, then it should be backed up by the majority.
Approval, yeah, of the board. Correct.
Which will be difficult in a quick, on the spot. Right.
That's right.
And, and personally, again, it's a board policy, but personally, that's why I like the policy the way that it's currently written. Because if you want to make it an agenda item, then the board discusses it. Then the board knows what the board believes before a statement or decision or a vote is then taken.
Right.
That's, I think that's the safety of the current policy.
It protects all members, and it protects the integrity of the board.
But also keep in mind, as this, if we revise this policy, whether we respond one time or 100 times, every person that speaks is going to expect a response.
Makes sense.
Well, how come they answered this one? Why didn't they answer mine? Why didn't they ask me a question? They answered them a question.
Especially if the vote goes a different way for each person.
It could be an extremely slippy, slippery slope. So, as we make a change, and again, I'm not against the change, we just better know, we better look at it from every side before we rush into putting a new policy.
I have not yet asked Mr. Bryant's thoughts. Does it say he's on? Mr. Bryant, if you can hear us, or have any thoughts to share on changing, potentially revising Policy 2310?
Mr. Bryant, we're having problems understanding you. And now, I think we've lost you. You're still there, but we can't hear you anymore.
So, after Fred's potential revisions, we would review it at the next meeting?
So, is everybody okay with the other policies, including 2127? Moving forward with those, as we still hold out on 2310?
I'd say that's the consensus.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Next, we have Item B, discussion of focus groups.
All right. Thank you, board members. First of all, we met February 11th with our parent focus group, and then on the 12th, we split out our elementary, middle, and high school teacher groups and met with them. And I had set up about 10 questions, and I think at each group I got to ask about two. It was good conversation. Once we asked the first question, they kind of filled in on all the others and shared that with us. So, I just kind of wanted to break down each group and talk to you a little bit about what was shared with positive, negatives, and then some of the takeaways that, that I picked up on and hear from you as well. With the parent group, the very first thing I noticed was how complimentary the parent group was of the efforts of our teachers. I think they recognized the work that has gone in to making the hybrid as successful as, as possible. Some of the other positives that they mentioned were within communication using ClassDojo, Remind, PowerSchool, and then the way that the Google Classroom or Canvas course was set up so that they were able to see due dates and things of that nature. They did mention about the office hours and the availability of the teachers. And then, they talked about some of the other options that have been set up for the packets, student study groups. They mentioned the breakout rooms that were used specifically with Southeastern. I know that was one school that mentioned the breakout rooms and how much the students have been enjoying those. And then, we did have, you know, the flash drives that are being used, but not as much as I'd maybe hoped that they would be. Parents talked about some of the, the roadblocks that we have. One of the first ones that came up was connectivity or lagging internet speed that we do see within the county in some of our locations. They talked about, even though we're using the same platforms within each school, sometimes we may have the assignments being turned in in different ways or different formats that are being used within those platforms. So, that was something that I could take back to the schools individually. And then, we may have Google Classroom being updated with assignments and PowerSchool not being updated as often, or PowerSchool being updated and the classroom not being done as often. So, those were some other things where we looked at maybe adding some consistency. They did voice concerns about students spending so much time on the computer with this format. And then, they talked about some of the challenges with differentiation between your lower-level, middle-level, and higher-level students. Mental health services were mentioned at every focus group. And then, we had a couple of parents to mention about the CTE options. It's really difficult to do shop remotely. Takeaways that we saw is that the relationship with the teacher is paramount. Our students need those relationships, and I think that's one of the things that's, that's missing in the full remote learning, or that is limited. We've got to find common ground in using that learning management system and look for more opportunities to make it more consistent. And this hybrid model, I, I think, is a, a good thing with the current situation, but it is challenging. And then, there were several individual issues that came up in regards to attendance and due dates. And some of the parents emailed later just to say, "I didn't say this during the meeting, but..." And I was able to pass that information along to our school principals and maybe make some individual improvements there. And then, we need to continue to develop avenues for our students to gain the social, emotional support that they need. Within the high school teacher group, there were several positives... Within the high school teacher group, there were several positives that came up. One that I really liked was when they talked about technology. We know that our students are very tech-savvy, social media, et cetera. They talked about the business end of the technology. You know, with using this for things beyond just texting. This was actually getting work done. And again, I think the staff members appreciated hearing us say the comments, the positive comments. The parents did recognize the work that was going into this. The challenges that were shared with every single group was student engagement, keeping our students moving through. And then, you know, the teachers working through and seeing these increased failure rates taking place. It's tough on everybody. Then, when you think about with a math problem, for example, I may be struggling on step three. In a normal classroom situation, a teacher would just come, point at my paper, identify the problem, and move on. If I'm struggling with the learning, adding in the toggling between screens, that's another layer of difficulty for our students. And they did identify that. The other thing that our teachers identified was they feel like the weight of the world's on their shoulders. They feel solely responsible, or they feel very responsible for student success, for the parent satisfaction within this, for the social-emotional needs of their students. And then, as we approach the testing window, they feel the weight of getting good results for the students here and making them successful. Our middle school teachers took a little bit of a different focus to start with when we looked at the positives. They started speaking about very specific technology programs. And there were some things shared there that I think they could use among themselves that we can pass along there. They did talk about the smaller class size because if you've been in our middle schools, you do recognize that when you get into a social studies or science class, they're huge. And this cut down the size a little bit, but it also creates part of the disconnection that we're seeing in the A-day, B-day schedule. And they did identify they would continue using the learning management system. I think Google Classroom has sort of been a hit for organizing your lessons. They did voice the same concerns that were mentioned earlier. One other thing that they did share was the pacing piece. Pacing is off because they are trying to make up things that students are missing on their remote days. So when the students aren't in the building, sometimes when they come back, the teachers are having to play catch-up, and it's creating some issues. And, you know, of course, with middle school students, they talked about the maturity level and being able to get on the Google meets when they are up and keeping up with the assignments at that age. With our elementary group, the positives that were mentioned were that the technology skills have increased for all. I think for the teachers, the parents, and the students. And in areas, we have seen the parent participation increase so that with the remote learning, if it's gonna be successful, it does have to be the partnership with home. They were also very grateful for the additional planning time that has been granted to make this hybrid learning work. The elementary teachers did express concerns with juggling in-person and remote students simultaneously. They did talk about the challenges of differentiation and keeping all the learners engaged when you're working within both systems. The other thing they shared was trying to get a true picture of the students' learning and their assessments because of the level of support at home. You may have, you know, a parent who isn't helping at all, and the student may not recognize what's required within the assignment or the assessment. Or you may have the parent who offers too much support and gives hints and skews the results to the positive side. Some specific comments that I did pick up on. It did seem that all parties were appreciative of being included within the focus group and being heard. We had teachers to express that they wanted to, you know, continue to have that voice with us. And then there were several, as I mentioned earlier, school-level situations that were shared. Some of those came through email, some came in the meeting. As far as tardy assignments, grading, things of that nature, where I was able to reach out to the principal and share those things with them so that we can make things a little more succinct. And then another thing that was sort of surprising was that one teacher expressed there are advantages to marking zeros in the grade book rather than leaving the grade blank. And so if there is work missing, and as a parent, I click on Power School, if none of the zeros have been entered, I may see that my student's doing really well. Well, then, as it approaches that date when all the assignments are due and those zeros drop in, now I'm seeing that my child may be failing. So, you know, the communication might be a little bit quicker if we go ahead and drop those in. You know, with the understanding that they will be updated as those assignments are entered. And then the teachers did voice that they would like to have a commitment to online or remote learning needs so that we're consistent, so we don't have the changeover between remote learning and in-person. The back and forth is really making things challenging. And then specific needs that were mentioned, and I know Ms. Barker will appreciate this one. We have increased our devices substantially, but the support has not been increased. So we do need additions to the tech team to help keep the technology running and keep things updated. We need to look at our methods of delivery to try to alleviate having remote and in-person occurring simultaneously. And, you know, I think there's a lot of different ways that we can approach that subject. And remote learners have to be connected for academic and social-emotional learning. And the teachers spoke specifically about the accountability. With the current situation we're in, we have to provide a remote opportunity for students to learn based on COVID. Once we get past COVID, it should be linked to the student's performance. And remote learning should be a privilege in that if you're not successful with this, then we need to look at going back to in-person learning to help you be successful. That was one thing that was shared by the teachers. And then we did discuss the idea of a virtual academy. For the most part, parents were pretty positive about the option. There was a level of interest because, you know, about half of the parents that we had in the group were doing remote. You know, and they did voice the concerns that we discussed earlier with the needs of diverse learners. And it was very clear that it had to be that solid partnership to make this successful. The teacher is so integral in making this successful. And then our teacher has gotten to some of the details of the operational components of this academy, talking about the protocols to be eligible. As I was saying earlier, your success depends on your, you know, your participation determines your ability to continue with that. They talked about the application process possibly. And then one thing that was evident with all the groups was that the teachers do favor separating remote and in-person learning. And then, again, if we're looking at a virtual academy, career and technical education classes would need to be limited because, you know, the hands-on is so very challenging, and you have to develop other protocols to have those students in at different times. So an option such as business may be the option or pathway that we would look at for a virtual academy. And, you know, those were just some of the details and takeaways that I had in discussion with the folks who participated. I'd open things up to our board members or anyone else who had participated to share other insights that I may not have brought up. And open up for questions.
You're good, thanks for that, Dave.
Ms. Messick, anything you'd like to share? Because you attended, correct?
I did, I attended. And one thing from the high school group that they mentioned was that some of the Chromebooks are five-years-old and that they are not as... They're harder to use, the older Chromebooks. And so I hope we could look into that, of the ones that... The schools that have got the oldest Chromebooks. And then I wanted to talk about the increased failure rate. You know, that is a real problem with all this that we've gone through. And I know it had to surprise a lot of people or should have the amount of failure in the high schools especially. So I think that we really need to work toward trying to, you know, eliminate a lot of that if we can. Now, one of the things I think that may be a problem with that failure rate is the fact that there's a lot of people, parents and all, that don't know to look where the zeros are. You know, a lot of people know to look at the part that... Trying to see where I've got that. There's a part that you look in in your Google. And it's, what's that called?
So within the Google Classroom?
What's the name of that you can look up to find the grades?
You can look in Power School, or it would be within Google Classroom.
Okay, well, you can look in Power School, and people will look there, okay? But I don't think, unless their child has been in high school, you know, several years, I don't think a lot of parents know to look in the Google Classroom to see when they put those zeros in. Now, if they don't, and they see that the grade's 85, 85, 85, and then all of a sudden, they look and they see all these zeros and the grade drops to 65 or whatever, then, you know, people panic. And parents panic because they don't understand. And they don't understand where to look for the zeros. And if those zeros come late in the ballgame, so to speak, become late right before grades go out, then sometimes it's, you know, sometimes the teachers say it's too late to turn in the work. Now, that's, in a way, puts the student... Now, the student probably knows they've not turned the work in, right? But it's still, if they put them in late and identify that they're missing this work, what is the solution to turning the late work in, Dr. Rice?
Well, again, you summarized that very well, that there's several different ways that you can do that. And depending, unless somebody turns it in on time and gets their credit immediately, there's problems with it. Because if somebody, if a teacher grades an assignment and puts all those in, and everyone that's not in, they put in a zero right then. And if somebody was out sick that day, they say, "Well, I didn't even get a chance to turn it in, and my zero's there." Well, they know they, they should know they can make that up later and return, make the grade. But if they don't turn it in, you know, again, there's been probably a lot of conversations and communications with the students to say, "You know, you've got one more week, and then I'm putting in grades. One more week, remember, you've got one more week." And then when they put in the zero, when the parent asks, it is too late. And so there's, I don't know that there's a perfect thing there. I know it's, it's, there are lots of tools in Power School that a teacher could do, collected but not graded, late. There's lots of other things that you can do. But again, that was some of the complaints of the teacher is, you know, "I grade assignments, I'm getting ready to put in grades, and I'll get four more, then I grade those, put those in, and I'm doing this throughout the whole semester." And it's like it's never-ending work.
It is, it's never-ending.
And so that's the complaint on that teacher's side of it. But you're, you're right. If it, if it does go in after there's not a time to fix it, it is a hopeless time. At the same time, I think these students have been communicated with all along the way, but a parent may not have known about it. And so that's the problem.
Look at the failure rate.
Oh, absolutely.
It has to tie in in some way to all those apps. And so I think there's a lot of parents out there that still don't know to look in both. Because most of them are looking in Power School. They're pulling up the grades, they're saying, "Oh, you know, they're passing, they're doing pretty good." And they don't think about looking in Google Classroom. So I think that the parents need to be aware that they need to, I don't know if the teachers need to communicate with the parents and say, "Hey, you need to keep up with both." But I think that's a problem that somehow could be rectified.
And as a parent that went through orientation, I was told to look in both. There's other parents in the room. I know that was communicated when I went through orientations at the beginning of the year to make sure that I checked both. I can't say, you know, obviously, I didn't go through every parent's, every teacher's orientation. And so I can't, but I know that that was stressed at the beginning. That's when we had that week-long, one-on-one orientation to try to make sure that we understood that these were the things that you needed to do throughout the school year. But that has been a while since that happened.
And Dr. Rice, you probably noticed this as well, where we have the district access, and then you have the parent access through the app. It's been really good for me to see it from that side as well to understand how to click through. And, you know, it will show a grade for the whole semester, but then I can click further down, and it will actually get to the list of assignments. So I can see, is it the zero or the dashes?
You see, people in the school system know that. We know that. But I'm saying there's a lot of parents out there that don't. Or they, once they click into it, when they see the grade drop, you know, and then they contact, why is the grade dropped from a B to an F or a B to a D? Then that's when, you know, the problem occurs. And then, I don't know, it's just, I feel like that's the problem I need to bring up that. And one teacher had said that they thought this digital pen would really be a good thing for people to use. And I didn't know how many, you know, teachers had that. That was in the high school, too. Okay. So, says the digital pen could be helpful to a lot of teachers. Could you explain what that is, Ms. Barker? No, no, I'm on to another subject. I hopped on to another subject that I said there was the three things I wanted to discuss. And the next one, you know, I said the Chromebooks are something that's really old. And then the grading, the two systems. And then the third one is this digital pen said it could be helpful to a lot of teachers. So I didn't know what that was. Teaching.
This was a science teacher at South that brought it up, that she had one. But I've not used one, so I don't...
I just, I didn't know how many teachers had those or...
I think she purchased that on her own. That was not a district-provided resource.
We don't provide those. Well, see, there again, teachers' pens out of their own pocket. Okay, well, I just, you know, thought I'd bring that up because she kept saying how that was a great thing to have.
Ms. Messick?
One thing, when I'm sitting there and listening to the lessons, I feel like that the students that, of course, in school, they really get a lot of, you know, good attention from the teacher. And the ones that are remote, you know, get the lesson, but they just don't get as much interaction. And I know that that's the nature of the beast, so to speak. And so, and I don't think there's anything that can be done to help that. But I'm saying that it seems like one group is in school in person more than the other group.
Talking about the A-days and B-days?
Yeah, yeah.
It does seem like the A-days tend to, I think, just a perception, it seems like the A-day has gone more days than the B-day. I don't know if we have a count in person.
In the calendar, there's one-day difference.
But I mean, I'm talking about, because we have...
They've missed a lot, you know, like last week...
Weather.
You know, they've missed a lot, the ones on the end there. You know, they've missed a lot, the ones on the end there.
When we revised the last time, we rebalanced it out. And there's one day difference.
But thus far, you're saying thus far this semester?
No, I'm saying the whole.
Whole time, okay.
Yeah.
Well, they've revised it though and taken into account.
We moved some for the second semester to rebalance it out. We, we have revised that.
Have you sent that out?
The, yes, ma'am, that's, that's on our website. And those revised days are taken into account in the second semester.
To try to help the B students regain time in the classroom?
Right, because, I mean, a lot of the time when we missed in the B day, we had those remote learning days scheduled on B days, on Fridays. And so those have been added back in. And again, there's one-day difference in the calendar.
And they're looking at the calendar, last night, the, this Wednesday is a B day and also next Wednesday, I think it's a B day.
Correct, so that'd be some catch-up day.
Right, so they've, they've revised that to where they're trying to catch the B days back up.
Well, that, that would be helpful because I do feel like that the, I think that would be very helpful. I'd like a copy of that. I guess I can go on the website and look.
It's on the website, but we can get you one before you leave today.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, the, the actual day-by-day calendar.
And Ms. Messick, when you were talking about the grading, there was one other thing I did want to mention that the teachers shared. If students go in, they can click Submit on all the assignments. So to the parent, it may look like everything is done and turned in. They may not have actually completed the work. That was one other thing that came up from the teachers.
Right.
So I just wanted to share that with the group.
And I'm not talking about my grandson. I'm talking about people in the school system, their students. I represent all the students in the schools. And so I don't want people to think that, that I'm just trying to represent one child. I'm not, you know, I'm representing them all. And I do hear from a lot of parents that they didn't know to click into both. And, and so I just want to make sure. You know, they say stuff at orientation when you're in the ninth grade. And sometimes you might miss that little fact. And, and are you looking into how to decrease these failure rates?
We are. I mean, we are trying to problem-solve every way that we can to improve practice and increase the engagement.
Oh, and one more thing, the attendance. You know, we had one person in the parent groups that said their child logged in like a minute or two late. And the person, you know, in charge says, well, you know, if you do that tomorrow, we're gonna count you absent. Well, see, I don't agree with that. I agree that when they log in in their own virtual, that they should not be counted absent.
I spoke with that principle already.
Because that is one thing that we need to be diligent about when they log in. If they log in two minutes late, you know, they might be having some type of broadband issues. And so we need to, or internet issues.
Encourage, encourage, yeah, rather than discourage.
Like on our streets, you know, they decided one time, a long time ago, to take out the internet and stuff and worked on something about 11 o'clock one morning. And so it knocked everybody in our neighborhood out. But you don't know that's coming. So I just think that, I think most teachers do try to, you know, count them present and stuff. But that one incident, that couldn't be the only person that's happened to. Thank you for checking into that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
I thought, I thought the meetings were very good. I want to thank Mr. Rose and Ms. McGee both for their part in it. I think the teachers, the parents, I think everybody thought it was helpful. They enjoyed it. I think it's something that we heard that they would like to, to, to do it again, you know, to keep it as maybe an ongoing. Every couple of months, you know, have one of these. Maybe with different teachers, different parents, so we can get better, you know, more perspective. I think all the points that Mr. Rose and Ms. Messick both made were going on and I agree, agree with all that. I just think it's a good thing. Talking about the, the, the Power School, the grades, I wonder if we couldn't do a, some kind of video or tutorial, put it out on, on YouTube or the school's website or wherever we need to put it. And then maybe do a, and then try to contact the parents and let them know that it's out there. Whether that would be through a phone call or, you know, email or whatever we need to try to, to help them. Because I agree, you know, orientation, you're having so much information that sometimes some of that slips by. And I know I get an email, I got my emails this morning for my daughter's grades. And, but as far as getting into it and seeing assignments and doing all that, I don't know that I could get into that. So if we had some kind of information there that we could put out, I think maybe would help the parents. And we did hear a lot from the teachers about trying to separate the in-class learning and the, and the virtual learning. If we could figure out a way to do that, whether that's through the virtual school or what, I think we're gonna try to discuss that maybe some today. But there was a lot of interest in trying to separate those two. I think especially from the teacher's standpoint. I think they find that it'd be much better to have those two separated. In technology, I think we are gonna have to think about the technology side of it, maybe in our next budget process, and make sure that we have enough in the budget. The power, the Chromebooks are, you know, after five or six years of a Chromebook, I'm sure it's probably gonna need to be replaced. And, and we may have to look at that in the budget process and make sure that we do have enough there and for technical support, repairs. I know Dr. Rice has spoken about that, he's working on that some now. But those are things that we probably maybe haven't thought about or anticipated as much with this COVID as trying to, you know, and, and, and everybody admits, you know, it's so much better now than it was last March. We have come, I mean, made great strides in the whole thing. So I think everybody's real happy with that. Consistency, they do want to see more consistency. And I think that the parents probably more so than anybody want to see more consistency. Middle school, if you've got six classes and each class you go to, the teacher's doing something a little bit different, using a little different platform, then that gets to be a little bit much, you know, if you've got two or three kids. You know, it can get into a lot of, so the more consistency we can make it, I think, would be the better. But all in all, great comments. The parents were real complimentary, the teachers. The parents really understand how hard the teachers are working, trying to make this whole thing work. And, and I think the administration is doing a great job of improving it, you know, week by week. So I say just keep up the good work, try to keep moving forward with it and, and maybe have some more of these meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. I mean, I agree with them. I think my struggle as an elementary parent is, you know, like you said, if, if, you know, a child could click Turn In, but you're not really able to go back in and see, like, once it's sent to the teacher, you know, where is a copy of what they turned in? You know what I mean? I, I think a little bit more information out there to make it easier for parents. I know that I've asked before about just a video to share, to sync up the Power School on the phones, you know, or how to get into that, you know, because not every parent may have taken the time to do so. Or a little more information out there for parents on that online app that you're referring to. Anything like that to hopefully might maybe get them a little more involved or informed. And any type of tutorial as far as Google Classroom goes. And just any, maybe even a more frequent, like a progress note, but maybe more frequent, because, you know, those print out for elementary and show, you know, if something we're missing. So maybe something like that, more frequently printed-out version. I know that creates more work, just an idea though. That would be the main thing for me. Any more information from you to share, Mr. Rose?
You know, the only other thing would be the level of contacts that our, our teachers are making within the contact logs. Because I know, you know, as we're looking at Power School and things of that nature, you know, the teachers will reach out and let them know when the student, you know, if they're not being successful. And try to encourage, discuss what things are missing and going through, you know, the details like that. So again, I just want to say, you know, we appreciate the teachers going that extra mile. And I know I've seen where principals, assistant principals, guidance counselors split up by grade levels and make contacts out to the students who are struggling. So, you know, I do think we can look at the video tutorials and continuing to push on Power School and expressing directions as we reach out to these parents to inform them. That way, you know, as we let them know through that phone call, we can also express how to continue receiving those updates, maybe help out there personally too.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Discussion C, Virtual Academy? I didn't know if that was further on Mr. Rose or.
Well, this, Mr. Robertson has asked us to, to discuss this. And so, you know, I'll turn it over to him to start the discussion.
Madam Chair, can we take like five minutes so I can leave some coffee?
Yes, sir. We'll take a quick recess for five minutes.
And talk about, you know, I guess, one, are we interested in doing a Virtual Academy? And two, what, you know, what would it look like? You know, what would, how would it be? What would be the qualifications to go to the Virtual Academy? And I think first on the list is, are enough interest, especially from the board, to do a Virtual Academy? If we're, if we're, you know, if we have any thoughts about doing one for the coming year, then we've got to get on it. You know, we can't wait and come up in June and say, well, we're gonna do a Virtual Academy for next year. It's not gonna work. So, you know, it's either, is there, if the interest is there, then we need to get busy with it. And if not, then we can quit talking about it. But that's really what I wanted to bring. I just wanted to see what, gauge what everybody's interest is, maybe some of the pros and cons of it. And, but I do think the interest is there from the teacher's standpoint, also from the parent's standpoint. I think both cases, Mr. Rose and Ms. McGee was in those meetings. I think there was, you know, a fair amount of interest in it. You know, I talked to Dr. Rice and we wonder if maybe there's some children that are homeschooled at this point, that if we did a Virtual Academy, that they would, might come into the Virtual Academy. Maybe doing a, a survey with some of those, some of those students to see if there would be interest there, how many people we could pick up. But it's just something that I just feel like that some of the other counties around us are doing Virtual Academy. I know Ms. Knight has talked about Rockingham County's doing a Virtual Academy. Is that correct?
I have heard that this is getting off the ground. It has been, what I've been told, done in a way that does not hurt, you know, individual school enrollment.
Right.
So I do not have all the details, but.
So that's, you know, if we don't have a Virtual Academy, are we gonna lose students to the other counties? So I just think there's maybe some discussion there. Are we, are we interested in doing one? What do we need to do to, to investigate it a little bit further? And, and just try to get the ball rolling a little bit on it. So that was my thoughts on maybe having a little discussion about that today and just kind of gauging some interest.
Mm-hmm. Anything to add to that, Mr. Rogers?
Always got something to add.
There you go, there you go.
I heard that a few minutes ago. I think Forsyth, well, I know Forsyth County has a Virtual Academy and they went ahead and poached a couple of administrators and went after several of our teachers. So when we started this whole discussion multiple, before you were elected on the board, we had town halls trying to figure out how to capture homeschoolers. Do we have any rough numbers, how many homeschoolers were, that came in to Plan C?
We have that data, I don't have it in front of me. Ms. Flagler, do you remember estimate of, have it?
Yes.
Came from homeschool to us last year?
I'll see if I can, the last time I recorded. Give me just a second, I'll see if I can.
All right, she's pulling it up. I mean, it's definitely a option. We have a declining enrollment. If we don't get it back, we're gonna have a, attended pandemic. I hate to be blunt.
Pleasure.
Pleasure. So I'm for it, properly managed and well-thought-out. I've been asking for it since the Francisco days. We had looked at, when Chad Beethy was here, potentially locating one there to assist with the maintenance of that school. I'm not against it, we just need to thoroughly vet how we approach it so that we don't hurt other options. But there is a contingency of students that are going to attend online. I think we've proven through this pandemic there's a contingency of students that really don't need to be online. They need to be in the classroom and I think we can all agree on that one. But there are some that do online and do online successfully. There's North Carolina Virtual Public Schools is an option. And then the School of Science and Math has an online-only option that my daughter took. So I know our students can facilitate an education online. We'd rather have them in classrooms. Some of them are very successful online and those are the ones we need to try to capture. But we need to also plan on how we doing it. So there better be a lot of thought process. Because we don't need to rip an ADM from one school just to add it to an online composite right now.
Thank you. Ms. Messick? And Ms. Flagler, just give us a wave when you think you found it. No, no rush, thank you.
Hate to be the negative person today, excuse me, I try not to be. But here are my thoughts. Because of the events of the past year and getting through those events, I feel it's too soon to consider changes of this magnitude, especially here at the beginning of March. I do not agree to include the elementary students. I think the foundation of education begins in the elementary school and I feel like that needs to be face-to-face. I know that in Forsyth County, I believe they have included the elementary schools. I know it's.
They're K-12.
Right. And also, we can't really compare ourselves to Forsyth County because they have something like 56,000 students, you know. We just can't compare ourselves to a large county that can just pull and pull and pull and won't even affect any of the schools. I think that schools would be in danger of closing and I would not be in favor of that. Because with an ADM of less than 100, the principal's salary would have to be paid out of our fund balance and our fund balance is way too small to support that kind of expense. I think that our communities is what defines Stokes County and that the school is the heart of their community. I think students and parents identify with their neighborhood schools. They support them throughout the year with fundraisers, festivals, band concerts, PTA programs, ballgames, athletic events, et cetera. Some communities could lose this tradition because of dropping enrollment if we have to pull from school to school to get a Virtual Academy. And I think we need to analyze the effect of this remote learning before we decide to use it as a permanent solution. An example would be the failure rate we're experiencing with this remote learning at this time. So I think there's a lot of things we need to look at very closely before we plunge into, to that. And then we'd have to figure out where we'd be housed, what, what facility would we use? And I do want to look into that about Rockingham County. Because how are they doing it and not losing ADM at their schools? That would be a good question somebody needs to explore. But those are my feelings at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson? Anything additional really? I guess you've kind of already shared a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just that the Virtual Academy, I agree with what Ms. Messick, a lot of what she's saying. I think we do have a Virtual Academy. It's not, it's not gonna be for every- going to be for everyone. And I think there should be qualifications that you'd have to qualify, almost like the early college, in order to get in. And if you're, if you didn't maintain grades and maybe came out of the virtual academy, back into the, into the classroom. Those are all things that we heard in the focus group. It would be more of a privilege and it would be just a choice. And I think my concern is mainly just, are we going to lose students to a virtual academy that some other county or state or whatever if we don't have our own? And is, is it even going to be, are we even going to be able to have enough students interested in it to be worthwhile to have it? There's just a lot of unanswered questions there that, you know, maybe we need to start trying to get some answers to those questions and, and just figure out what we're doing.
I mean, I'm not opposed to marketing, like Mr. Rogers said, you know, the NC Virtual or the School of Math and Science. I mean, you just need to be enrolled in the school to pursue those options correctly, no, an outside.
We've been using those as options for years now. Again, some successful, some not. Mr. Rose was telling me the other day about, what was our failure rate with the virtual public schools?
I mainly just look at $8,000, man, that we spend. Don't even refer to the following in the comments, but it was slightly over $9,000. At $360 per class, we would have been able to pay for it.
Wow.
I have a lot of speculation for that. If we fail and you do not have that as well.
May I ask a question? If we have a student enrolled in that and they fail a class, do we have to pay for them to take it again?
To take it again? I mean, we could set a policy or we could set a procedure which is not moving forward and retaking that course in my virtual public.
Well, that's one of...
Excuse me. Mr. Rose, could you pull your microphone up and make sure it's on? We're having, again, with a mask, it's muffled and it's kind of hard to hear.
Right now, we don't have anything in place, and we've used this to balance schedules with our guidance counselors. So if a student fails the course, you know, that's just basically a decision to try to work it back into the schedule. But I had talked with the guidance counselors recently in regards to the possibility of limiting that for students who are not successful, having them, you know, not continue with North Carolina Virtual Public. Because if they can't do the remote successfully, then we need to find a different option.
But does our policy right now say that they can take it over and we pay for it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we might need to amend that.
Yes, ma'am.
But if they take a new class and fail it, they could still take it over?
Yes, sir.
And it still costs us to put an educator in the classroom. So...
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's, it's a, maybe a false $9,000 when you figure what every cost of failure is.
Right. But, you know, they're choosing to take him virtually through the public.
Because it's not, it may not be offered.
Oh.
You can't take Latin in any high school, but you could take it online.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
We have those answers from Mr. Roberts.
Okay.
September the 1st, according to Ms. Flagler's information, we have 236 new students to our district, 174 from out of county, 27 of those are homeschooled, 22 were from charter schools, and 13 were from private schools.
So 22 times 8,000, that's an ADM number. My concern is if we don't offer of some type and our enrollment is down 10%, our staffing has to go down 10%.
Right. My question to what you shared, and I don't think you really, we would need to break that down further. You know, you need to know if that's elementary, if they're came because they wanted to be five days a week, or if that's middle and they're AB or high and that's AB. Do you see what I'm saying? Or if they are students that came...
Yeah, that's wrong number.
But I would love for you to break that down further and know, are those students in Plan C? Is that what pulled those 27 homeschool students or not? You know, that's good, you know, further information.
Do we have any idea how many elementary schools or schools students are still in Plan C?
Yes.
As of second semester?
Yes.
Uh, 20%. I can have that number for you later today, but 20% roughly, where overall as a district, we're about 30%. So more secondary are choosing that. But again, they have said when we can go back five days a week, and some have said when masks are gone, we will be back. But right now, we would rather stay at home. But the, when we got to go Plan A, that number keeps growing to come back to school. That's what I keep hearing is, you know, I used to have five in my class virtually, now I'm down to four, then three. And then I know one teacher I saw at the vaccine clinic last week, she said, next week I have all my students back again. And so they are working their way back. That number's getting smaller and smaller.
Oh, can I ask you to read that again? Because I tried to write it down.
Yes. As of early?
As of early September, September 1, we had 236 new students to Stokes County. 174 were out of state and or, excuse me, out of county and or out of state. If we had a new staff member, we're not accepting out of state students other than that situation. 27 were homeschooled. 22 were from charter schools.
Charter.
And 13 were from private schools. And we'll break that down further and get that information to you.
Thank you.
Later today or tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flagler.
I mean, I do feel like things are definitely tough or stressing during this pandemic. And, you know, if we can get beyond that, you know, it seems like the majority consensus is wanting to be in the classroom. But I know if, if the need, even after vaccinations and things, if the need still remains for a virtual option, it's kind of where to go from there. I don't know. We might have to get creative if, say, you know, certain teacher would guarantee, you know, be willing to juggle that.
There are a lot of scenarios that go on about this. One, part of the teacher's desire is to teach one method again, to get back. And it is, I've heard several superintendents, several different researchers say it about takes twice the planning time to teach virtually and on, and face to face as it does just one of the, the one way. The problem is, is in the current situation we have, that's not going away. A virtual school will not fix that. It will limit that, but it won't fix it. For example, my son's in quarantine this week due to a close exposure. He not tested positive, but he was called out of school on Thursday, realized that he had been a close exposure to someone, and he went home for the rest of the day on Thursday and Friday. So even if we were in school five days a week and he did not have a virtual class, that teacher would have had to teach him remotely Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of this week because that's in his quarantine time. So having a virtual academy is not going to stop the times when a teacher has to turn that on. And he told me in one of his classes, he was the third one called out of that class that period. He said, so I assume we're all quarantined. So that teacher now has three more remote students. So even if we had a virtual academy, it may not fix it until some of these quarantine rules are released, relaxed, or whatever. And we don't know that. They may never be relaxed. I really don't know that answer. So while it can fix some things, it may not fix everything. The other thing that can happen from a logistical point is it can cause more combo classes in our, especially our elementary schools. That's where we have the combo classes now, where if you take 30 kids out of Germanton, then their class sizes go down, and it's probably going to cause more combo classes. Is that the end of the world? No, we have combo classes now, but it may swap one hardship for another. It, the, the mention was made about ADM, and I'm just talking pros and cons. Some of our schools, if we did a standalone virtual school with a school number, with an administrator, it could cause the closures of some, some schools. The positives, again, when it works and there's not the quarantine, the teachers would greatly appreciate one method of instruction to just have face to face. I don't think there's a teacher in our district, and I shouldn't speak for them, but I don't think there's a teacher in our district that says, I hope this never goes away. I love teaching both methods all the time. I, I absolutely agree that the teachers, you know, would feel that way. But I don't know that that can be a reality with the quarantines. But it will have some trickle down effects in some other ways. One of the greatest strengths of Stokes County, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, is our small community schools. The worst thing from a financial aspect that Ms. Moore and I could talk about is our small schools because we're inefficient. Again, we've talked about this several times, that basically the state funds us as if we're one school of 5,600 students. And so we have 19 media coordinators at our schools. If we had 12 schools, we would only have 12. That's seven extra positions that could be used somewhere else. So our inefficiency is be, is due to our strong community school structure. If you keep adding, if small learning community is the, the buzzword term for this, like our early college, everybody would say our early college is a wonderful program. It does take 40 students out of North Stokes High School. If, and so there's roughly 10 per year grade level that go from North Stokes to the early college. If you take another 40 students out of North Stokes, it becomes very hard for that to be a school anymore, to be a comprehensive high school. Because you don't get, you get staffed by your number of students. If you're down to 250, 260 students, that, if you're staffed one teacher per 30 students, again, you, you see the number problem that, how do you have eight teachers, not counting your CTE and stuff, but how do you have eight teachers to teach four math, four language arts, four social study? I mean, it gets very difficult to have a school in that regard. So we are happy to do whatever research the board wants us to do. We want you going into this eyes wide open of what cause and effect it may have. We've talked about a little bit of, could you creatively schedule and say, you know, in our virtual school, they're all going to be transferred to Pine Hall in kindergarten and have a virtual kindergarten classroom at Pine Hall that would increase their ADM by 20. And then maybe that would account for the other 20 that left to go do virtual school so they stay neutral. But then they're under Pine Hall and kindergarten, and Lawsonville in second grade, and Nancy Reynolds in third grade. As we tried to shuffle that around, do they ever get a school identity with a school principal? Because, you know, that, that's trying to do it without the school number. So that has some downside. It has some upside. Again, if the board wants us to do more research and bring to you a proposal, we're happy to do so. But I've looked at it just about every different way, and we've discussed it as directors many different times. We just want you to do eyes wide open, what it could be some cause and effect relationships with that, and we're happy to do what the board directs.
And the biggest negative being hurting individual school ADM?
If you did a true virtual school, a school number, administrator, yes, it potentially could mean closing two to four schools.
How many?
Two to four. Pine Hall would is, would be a struggle to keep open. Lawsonville would be a struggle to keep open. Nancy Reynolds would be a struggle to keep open. Now, again, you wouldn't close every one of them because you could take the two remainings and combine it into one. And so, but those are schools, Meadowbrook would be one that we would need, really have to look at. And this, Honey Grove and North Stokes, depending on how many people from each area, would need to be looked at. Germanton would, could potentially have issues. What am I missing? Every school that's 120 or less would be, would be closely examined. And it, so there's several different possibilities, and the board would then have to look at redistricting, consolidating, if we get that route of a virtual school with a, with a school number. If we do what we've been doing, teachers are not happy, but it allows schools to run the way they are, and it keeps them in practice for when quarantines happen because they're used to hitting the camera, hitting record, making sure that Google Classroom is the structure of that school. So even though it's been very difficult on people, there's some positives from that as well. A homebound student, we never know when they're, they're going to have a medical issue that requires them to be homebound. As one of our elementary teachers said in that meeting, I think it was brought up in here, she said, for the first time, I can really say I'm technology literate. I never would have said that before, but now I can. Well, that teacher now could teach a homebound student because they've learned it. And there, and so there are some strengths in what we're doing now as well. But again, we're, we're happy to, to talk pros and cons with the board. We're happy to take a direction from the board and do more research. We're, we work the pleasure of the board, and we're happy to do what you want us to do.
Dr. Rice, to pull this closer, knowing that some of our schools, people...
Anyway.
Anyway, even minus the discussion of Virtual Academy, we've got some schools that
And is that because of COVID? We do know that we lost people to private schools, whether in state or out of state, who said, my kids are going to school five days a week without a mask, back in August, when we were not able to offer five days a week instruction. That we know we had those people that left us then for consistency. And, but they've, a lot of them have said to us, when we get back to normal, we're coming back. And that may help us in those situations as well. But a lot of it's just unknown.
Yeah, I would like to hope that we could see, you know, more normal times and work on pulling students in. Then, I know in my area, it seems to be the, the undertone, like you said, was wanting face to face, working families couldn't be home or have an option, you know, for when we were in like a Plan C mode. So then, you know, once, you know, during that short window of time when everybody was kind of Plan C, they ventured out and found another option, and it's hard to pull them back in sometimes. So, anyway, I think...
If I might add, honestly, you look at the numbers, we're going to be at best ANC through next school year.
I would agree with that.
Nothing's going to change. So as far as running to a virtual academy to get it set up, I don't think it's that critical yet. The one thing I'm still preaching and hasn't happened yet, now, we have done a great job updating the website and getting everybody on the same page. But we need to advertise, we need to market ourselves better. And there, I haven't seen that. Mr. Robertson, you spoke at a board meeting. That's something people look at when they're wanting to come to Stokes County. How do we do it? My suggestion, let's get some of the high school, everybody's getting tech savvy because we're all online now. Let's get some of the high schools to help the middle schools and the elementary schools marketing themselves. 30-second commercial on the wonderful new website we have for each school wouldn't be a bad thing. You're in the home business inspections. How many, how many potential buyers that you inspect, you think went to the website of a school to see before I move to that area? Let me look and see what that school's like.
They all do. Maybe not all of them, but it is a huge percentage of the parents.
And to me, a positive statement from a student, this is why we love our school. And I've said it again, we've got a drone class at South Stokes. Let's take a drone and fly it to the school.
Yeah. I mean, I'm willing to, you know, serve on a committee of sorts or a, anything to meet with these folks or any way possible to try to help, you know, marketing. I know that is more of a board item for say, or whatever we need to do to kind of get that...
The chair assigned a committee.
Yeah, get that rolling.
Was it one at Cove Elementary that had the commercial on their website?
Yeah, one at Cove Elementary. We did have a really great...
Has anybody seen the one at Cove Elementary has?
YouTube video about kindergarten.
Several, several of our schools put out some stuff last, worked on some things last year, and then March happened. And then when we came back to school, we didn't really feel great about putting that back out there because it was not social distancing, no mask, no anything. But we had worked on a lot of that stuff last spring. And, yeah, but we, we haven't picked it back up this year.
Yeah. Ms. McGee, I was gonna say, I think the particular video I saw, they were in masks, but, you know.
Having a mask is not a problem because that shows them we're taking this serious.
Right.
One at Cove Elementary's got a good, good little commercial.
But we need one countywide. Every school needs to promote because it's every school's livelihood that's at stake.
Right. Ms. McGee?
So for kindergarten registration, I did ask principals to give virtual tours of their schools. their schools. Um, the two that I know for sure that's out there was the one you saw from Walnut Cove and London has one out now as well. Um, so, just to kind of help market for kindergarten registration and put it out there that, um, we are enrolling now for kindergarten. Um, it may look a little bit different, but we're, we're still gonna learn and be together and those kinds of things. So, that's the two schools I know for sure that have something out at this time.
It's a virtual tour, right?
Some of it is. London did more of a commercial type thing, you'll have to go onto their website.
And they're all being kind of asked, you know, like if you can sort of thing?
Yes, yes, yes.
It's a if you can, I'm saying.
We need to.
We started filming these meetings because we got West Stokes involved and their techni-technology people figured out how to film a meeting that we had never tried before.
Mm-hmm.
Cost us a pizza party. Wow. Maybe we need to.
Do more pizza parties than.
I mean, what better way to learn than to do and what ba- better way to collaborate than to meet together? Social distanced, but, okay.
So, would the board be okay with, you know, if I would like to kind of start that and, uh, go with a focus group to move forward on marketing or if another board member would like to help and meet with some of these tech savvy groups?
I'd be glad to help out.
I think we all are.
Yeah, I think everybody would be.
I don't wanna speak for Pat, but I mean.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
We might could divide up the schools and take.
Dividing, yeah, okay.
So, it's not so much on any one person, it's, uh, each one of us take a few schools.
Okay. Um, well, we will, uh.
Can we, uh, one other question, do we have, uh, uh, any idea on the trends or are our numbers trending up as far as students or down? I know we keep losing students, but, uh, what, do we have any idea of what it's gonna be in the future? I mean, is it, uh?
The last.
The kindergarten numbers up?
The last research on that only went through like the twenty-twenty-one school year, correct? And it was supposed to start flatlining, go down until around twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one and, again, I don't know that this year's numbers are an accurate betrayal because of COVID.
Right.
But the, the drop has happened every year. Um, the drop has slowed some, but it's, it was still dropping.
I feel like we had sort of maintained before COVID hit, the year that co- what, twenty-twenty, the beginning of that school year, we had kind of held our own.
It was pretty.
Yeah.
It was a lot closer to normal than the drops in the past.
Yeah.
But then this year is, was another drop, but I, again, what do you contribute it to?
Um, I'd like to ask something before we move on.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Ms. Liger, do you remember several years ago, uh, when a lot of people were thinking that the majority of our students were leaving to go to Forsyth County and different counties? That you made a list of how many students left and where they went to the different states and, could you make a list of that and for the board members? Because that was really helpful. Because I went to a meeting and, you know, um, read that out several years ago as to where our students are moving to. And, you know, it was really an eye-opener for all those people because, uh, some were moving out of state and, you know, different, some were moving way to Oak County in the east. And so, could you make us a list of that or do you have it nailed?
Uh, no, I, I'm.
Yeah.
Working on pulling some data now, but, um, are you talking about all of the withdrawals that's left this year? Where they have, I mean, we, we put in exit comments.
Uh-huh.
Like if they move to Utah or Tennessee or wherever.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's how we determine and I look at it, so.
I would appreciate that, maybe.
Even last year.
Yeah, last year and this year.
What I'm wondering, and I don't wanna speak for Ms. Liger, there's two groups of people that leave. There's one that sta- still live in Stokes County but request a release to go somewhere else. And then there's the people with a withdrawal to move. Or is it, we, are you wanting to know both of those or just one of those versus the other?
Well, is that hard to do both?
No, we, uh, we're just starting for next school year, but the, you know, this school year's data should be easy to pull.
Okay. Well, maybe if you could do this year and last year, you know, because it started way in March and then last year.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind, uh, that is really helpful to see because you realize that they're not just moving over to Forsyth or Rockingham or over to Yadkin. You know, some of these people are moving out of state and they're not gonna come back.
That year I did that, we had a lot.
Yeah.
Just moving all over the state in North Carolina.
Right, yeah. And would you say that most parents participate in exit comments or have some type of communication from the school to them when they decide not to come back or not necessarily? That's kind of hard, there's a, a gap there.
As far as I know, there's usually, um, a withdrawal form and, Mr. Rose, you might correct me if.
But there may or may not be input given, right?
If I'm taking my child to South County, that's at least the.
They, they have to indicate on that form their reasoning for that, but if they're simply withdrawing because they're moving to Utah, they may simply say.
Or they're gonna.
I'm leaving for a job.
Enroll in a private Christian co-op or something, they're not necessarily gonna tell.
General statute is, is before you can enroll in another district, you have to.
Get a release.
Release, if you.
But private and homeschool, that does not apply, so that's a huge gap in the data. Okay.
Most of our public schools will do a request of records.
Right.
To the school and then that might be, you know, when we see that we need to withdraw a student.
So, we need both, so people just move away and then the release?
I'll, I'll break it down.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, I would just say thank y'all and it seems like the overall consensus of the board is, you know, um, we are curious what other districts are doing and how we could help with the virtual option, but it sounds like in the middle of this pandemic and the hardships that are going on, we're not willing to risk, uh, negative effects on schools or blocks of students, you know, um, for the sake of, of offering a virtual academy maybe. Um, I think, you know, I'm understanding what Mike's saying at MPAD and Vaughn. Um, I think we've lost Mr. Bryant, I'm not sure, but, um, we welcome his input as well, but, um, we'll move on then. It looks like next we have discussion item D, Senate Bill Thirty-seven?
Uh, yes, board members, as you may have seen over the weekend, Senate Bill Thirty-seven was vetoed on February twenty-sixth by the governor. I have tried to, um, find out if the Senate is planning to override that, I cannot get a confirmation on that or not, which means to me they're probably counting votes and trying to sway votes one way or the other. Uh, but as of right now, Senate Bill Thirty-seven, uh, although ratified by both the Senate and the House and originally on the votes, had enough votes to override a governor's veto, uh, the discussion is the reason he waited as long as he did to veto it was till he could get those votes switched and, but now maybe they're working, they're trying to get them back. So, as of right now, there is no update, uh, as that will affect, how that will affect us, but I will keep you, uh, up to date if anything does happen with that quickly. We were prepared, if that did pass, to, to start some things in action. One part of that was to have parents to choose with a hard decision what they were wanting to do moving forward, to either go to Plan A or stay in Plan C. Since, what I would like to do with the next board meeting is bring you a draft of that choosing letter to si- give, that would give this a week or so before board materials go out to see if there is a vote. If it does look like it has just died at that point, I would like to bring back a recommendation to the board to have parents choose between B or C for the remainder of the year. The one thing that we kept hearing during our focus groups was the personal choice fluidity was very frustrating. You know, it rained on Friday, so I don't wanna get out in the rain today, so I'm gonna be a remote student today. Uh, my alarm didn't go off, so I'm gonna be, I didn't feel like going today. Not in quarantine, not a real issue, but just more of a personal preference. Parents expressed concern about that, about people need a work ethic, if you will.
Commitment.
Uh, a commitment, the soft skills that will help later in life, that most of us don't get a choice to go to work only when we feel like it and that we need that type of work ethic in our students. Uh, teachers were very frustrated, again, thinking, "I have one student remote, now all of a sudden today I have five remote, tomorrow I have two remote, bar, next day I have one," just based on feeling. So, uh, I would like to bring that to the next board meeting and then look at doing it that, uh, for the last nine weeks of schools, to have people choose so that they're not wishy-washy, if you will. Uh, but again, I, I want to give Senate Bill Thirty-seven a few days to, to see if anything happens with it, to see if they override that veto. Any questions about that? I've tried to keep you up to date on that.
I don't think so.
Uh, Dr. Rice, if I'm not mistaken, I think I heard on the radio this morning on the way over that, uh, that they may be voting on that override this week.
And I hope so, I've just not been able to get a confirmation of that. I, I, I do hope there's some action with that to let us know one way or the other.
Right, right.
Either way. Uh, the other bill, uh, discussion item E is House Bill One-S sixteen.
Uh, hold on.
I'm sorry.
If they vote this week, how quick? Can we pull the trigger?
How quick can we what?
Can we pull the trigger?
You have up to fifteen days, I don't plan on taking fifteen days. I do wanna send out a commitment letter to parents to let them decide, uh, and then get that back in and then, you know, if they vote this Wednesday, I wouldn't say that we would be ready Monday, but by the following Monday, I would say we'd be back in school.
Okay.
Uh, we will, we will need at least a five-day turnaround.
Right.
And so, and then a five-day and Monday, but, you know, I, I, I think that's fair.
Okay.
And thank you for, um, you know, staying on this and trying to get our students back and communicating with our, um, representatives and legislators. Um, the next Senate bill?
Next Senate bill is Senate Bill One-S sixteen and House Bill, um, really One-Twenty-Eight, there's, the other numbers are there because of the filing numbers. Both of those have to do with increasing spectators at our schools, uh, at our facilities. Both of those are still working through the process, but as you have heard, Governor Cooper did relax some of those restrictions to allow thirty percent into our facilities, uh, with some provisions. Gymnasiums are capped at two-fifty, uh, so regardless that West Stokes Gym may hold eleven-hundred, thirty percent is more than two-fifty, but they're capped at two-fifty. And so, uh, as, and actually we'll kind of go ahead and look there, if you look at item G in your agenda, I put an update in there, that tells you what our stadium capacities are, uh, if using the thirty percent in the gyms, what they would be if this, in the stadiums, thirty percent. But when you look at the middle schools, the middle schools are problematic. Stadium fire capacity has to do with fixed seating. Well, our football stadiums in our middle schools have small metal bleachers. Most people don't sit in those. Most people stand around the track or sit in camping chairs. Uh, this was laying at your desk this morning, if you're still looking for it. Uh, and so, we did two different things to look at usable footage. One, we went to a website and we could dot out where people sit and we found the square footage and then we took out the square footage from the football field where you would not be sitting during a game to give us a usable square footage. We also had the fire marshal go out and measure that as well. Was it not just laying at your desk this morning?
No, I put it in here.
Okay, you put it in there. It should be the last item in discussion, uh, if you put it where the other one was. But we all, the fire marshal also went out and measured that as well and I would suggest using the lower of those two numbers. Uh, for example, at Pine Grove, using the website, it came up with six-hundred-and-forty-five, the fire marshal came up with a very unofficial number. He said, "Again, I can't give you a seating capacity when there's no seats." But I will have measured this out and he said seven-forty-four. Using the lower of those two numbers, I think keeps us very safe. And, and I apologize, y'all not have that laying right beside?
I saw it here at my desk a few minutes ago, but.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Teller can run me some copies real quick, how many need, still needs them?
We're okay.
Y'all two?
I think Pat needs.
Okay, so we need two. And so, we do have an idea of what would be a, a usable number for that. Our middle schools believe those numbers are fine, they've not used that many in capacity in the past. This also gives us an idea of what we could use for graduations at this time. Uh, if you look at the high school seating capacity, uh, that would be an estimate for that as well. But those two bills would increase these numbers if they were to pass. Uh, I don't know what the future status of these are, when they're going on to the next round, but I did want y'all to know this and again, these were put in here before the governor's orders on Wednesday to let you know that what potentially could happen to increase capacity, but he has already done some of that. So, these bills may go away at this point or they may keep trying to go through. Kyle Hall was the sp- sponsor of the House bill that's in your folder and it would allow up to fifty percent capacity in our facilities.
I know there's definitely been a, you know, an outcry from parents to want to see their children in person if it possible and not miss out on this time of being involved in their athletics, so.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you for continuing to, uh, advocate for that. Any concerns, board? Next, we have the federal fund budget amendment number one, Ms. Moore?
Thank you. Yes, this is, uh, federal amendment number one. Since we approved the budget resolution, as things change in receiving revenue, uh, we do commit some amendments to the board and this is increasing our federal revenue by a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, one-ninety-nine, fifty-five. This is in addition to what was approved in our resolution at the last meeting. As you can see, we've received some additional funding for CTE, seven-thousand-nine-thirty-three. Our sixty program, which again is for our exceptional children, there was a decrease of twenty-four-three-seventy-four. The one-oh-five was the Title I school improvement for our Meadowbrook Academy of ninety-nine-seven-sixty-one. The PRC one-eighteen again is for our exceptional children's program, eleven-thousand-five-forty-seven-fifty-five. And then we received some additional cares money for exceptional children program of sixty-thousand-three-thirty-two. So, those make up the one-fifty-five, one-ninety-nine, fifty-five. And you will see, uh, federal money drops at different times and that you will see, uh, changes in that as the year goes on, so this is a normal procedure that we see.
Would you like this to be acted upon today? Does it need us to?
I'm fine to wait, but.
They're asking you if you'd like more to do today?
Well, I know you all don't like to do that, so, I mean, I can wait. You don't have to move it if you don't want to, that's fine. I can wait.
Put on action for next.
Yeah, if there's a motion to move it to action, that's up to the board, I mean, I don't see a reason of holding up, you know. Right.
Well, I'm a motion, we move it to action.
Okay.
Is that all right?
It's up to you, I don't know.
Okay, so, we have a motion to move it to action, the budget amendment one, is there a second?
Then I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? We'll make that action, item B.
Well, you may wanna make it action item A, well, we can't do, we can't do A until we go.
End of clause, so it will be A, thank you. Action item A, and then, um, next we have discussion of relaunch?
And board, I just, the updated numbers, uh, as of February twenty-sixth for the county, a hundred and six active cases. Just for perspective, in the last several weeks, that's gone down from nearly four-hundred down to one-hundred, so we're on the right trends in Stokes County. Uh, and in our schools, our staff this morning, when I came up here, it was two active cases amongst school staff and four active cases amongst our students. The total number of staff were one-oh-five for the year and the total number of students is two-twenty-two. And again, we did have the one cluster that we have successfully mitigated that situation. And again, the other update is that staff people had the vaccine clinics on Friday and I cannot be more pleased at the way Life Bright and the Health Department handled that. I know I went in for my appointment at nine o'clock, I walked over, handed a sheet of paper to somebody, somebody spoke to me, I spoke to them while I was talking to them, they handed it back, told me to go into the other room, I walked straight in, sat down, got a shot, got up, went to the walk, holding area. When I went to Life Bright, uh, that afternoon, when I thought the more bulk of people would come, I wanted to see that, the longest I saw anybody wait from the time they walked in the front door till they were going to the holding area to wait fifteen minutes was six minutes. The longest wait anybody had from entering the door to having their shot was six minutes. So, a- and that was with about twenty people that came in the door at once. Uh, and so, I think everything went very smoothly, a lot of smiles behind the mask, uh, amongst our staff members, they were very appreciative of the efforts for that day and, uh, again, so that's a, an update on that, they'll get their second shot in four weeks and so, four weeks from Friday. But everything went very well with that, if there's any. But everything went very well with that. If there's any questions?
Any questions regarding the COVID update?
Yeah, but I would like to say that I just communicated with Mr. Hall, Kyle Hall, and he said basically what you said, they're counting votes and making sure that the ones that voted for it to start with are sticking with them. And he said most likely they will vote on it this week.
Okay. That's good news. And thank you for your communication and efforts with the Health Department and the local Life Bright Hospital. And I hope they know how much Stokes County Schools appreciates them.
I'd like to thank you too, because that was the big effort for all this. And I really appreciate the Health Department and Life Bright working together. And so, thank you so much.
Well, I'm very appreciative of Life Bright stepping up and coming to the table. If not, it could have taken up to a month to get our staff vaccinated. And they stepped up, made the request for another clinic, and it's just worked out beautifully. I, I've made the statement several times on Friday. I wish every partnership that we had worked as smoothly as this one did because, but everybody went into it for the same reason and worked together, and no one cared the credit that they got. They just wanted to get the job done, but both of them did a great job. Ms. Jessup, Dr. Taylor, our nurses, everybody did a wonderful job making this happen.
Really thank you all.
Yeah.
And the vaccines, some of them came from the state, didn't they?
I, I can't tell you where they came from.
Counties for all the school personnel, teachers to get, the staff to get the vaccines.
What percentage of our staff does that make it?
It was around 400 of 900.
All right. Thank y'all so much. Next, we have the calendar committee report. Is that you?
Yes, it is. Board members, early this morning, I laid at your desk or at your spot a cover letter that indicates or states all the committee member names and who they represent, where they represent, and two calendars. These are the calendars that the calendar committee are recommending. Option A represents a return to a start date of Monday closest to August the 26th. And option C represents or presents a calendar that includes an earlier start date of 8/16, August the 16th, with five virtual days. Please keep in mind that as, as of now, we have not received final guidance from the General Assembly as to what the rules will be. So that's why we wanted to bring to you two versions. One with a start date of 26th and one with a start date of August the 16th. Couple of things to keep in mind. These are the recommendations of the calendar committee. We met twice. We went over, actually, three versions of a calendar. This is, as I mentioned, recommend, these are the recommendations of the committee. The board can make additional changes, or you may vote for another calendar completely if you choose to do so. We would ask, and I, Mr. Rogers and Mr. Bryant were the two board members representing you on that committee. I don't want to speak for them. I'm going to give Mr. Rogers and Mr. Bryant a chance to, to summarize in a second. But if at all possible, from my perspective, we would like to ask these be moved to action, if possible, because we typically have a calendar ready in December. But we have waited and hoped to get more direction from Raleigh, have not received any. So we decided we, we need to get something out there for our families and our staff to respond to and, and be able to, to make plans, et cetera. You will notice that you do not have a calendar from the Early College, because our calendar committee does not create that calendar. It is pretty much created based on the Forsyth Tech calendar, which we have very little input in. So our intention is to bring that calendar or a couple of calendars for your review for the Early College at, at one of your upcoming meetings. So basically, you have, real quickly, option B is a start date of August the 26th. It has the requisite number of holidays, annual leave days. Both, both of these calendars do have first semester ending before Christmas for high schools. So high school students would be taking their exam before Christmas. It's an early, an unbalanced calendar for 9/12. You see there when Christmas would be, when spring break would be. And the last day of school on this calendar would be the 31st of May, barring weather. Mr. Rogers, do you have anything you'd like to add about the process or?
It was great working with everybody. I mean, it was the majority of faculty, a majority representation from faculty and staff. There's not a lot of flexibility. The state pretty much says that you're gonna do it this way. You have a day here, a day there. This was the vast majority's decision. There were some other requests that just couldn't, couldn't, didn't make sense for, at the time.
Other requests to accommodate in the schedule?
Yeah. Putting a different perspective on President's Day was one of the requests, and also taking the day out. The day after the Super Bowl, I guess, from what I understand, is a day that we may have a larger than normal number of substitutes required. But we didn't want, as a group, to honor the Supre, the day after the Super Bowl as a workday and put more emphasis on it. We're all professionals here, so. That's just where it came. The compromise was made with just making Staff Development Day the 21st. On February, that is.
Okay.
As Mr. Rogers said, the state is very restrictive. There are 11 holidays that we have to abide by. Just for your information, Veterans Day is the one holiday that cannot be moved. That is the one holiday per law that you cannot have school on. It has to be the 11th of November unless it falls on the weekend. Then regard, if it's Saturday or Sunday, it could be a Friday or Monday before or after. But basically, what it boils down to is where we can put some workdays. Looking at option C real quick, that does, if you remember this year, the General Assembly gave us the ability to back up and start earlier, a week earlier this year, and gave us the option or the ability to put five virtual days in the body of the calendar. We did that. And by starting five days earlier under option C, the last day of school would be the 27th of May. Again, these are the recommendations of the calendar committee. I, I do want to say thank you to everyone that took part, and you can go back and look at that list. We had two board members, myself. We had a principal from each district. We had a teacher and a classified staff member from each district and a parent from each district. So we, we did have, yes ma'am?
The majority of people, and Mike, Mike can answer this, which option did they prefer?
These, these were the ones.
These were the two top vote getters.
Yes.
Okay, which one out of these two? How was it marked?
Option B.
One has the virtual days, which we're not sure if we're gonna be giving. If we're given virtual, they won't see. If we're not given virtual, they won't be.
That's correct.
Okay.
So option B is more of a regular calendar. Option C has the virtual days and an earlier start date.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Mr. Bryant, I'm not sure if Mr. Bryant can hear or if he is available.
I'm not sure, Ms. Barker, but it doesn't look like it.
Mr. Bryant, do you have anything else to add?
Can you tell? Is he even on?
So the recommendation is to adopt B, and then if the legislature requires us to do the virtual learning, we have one ready. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct. Then make a motion, move it to action. Let everybody know.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
In June, what was the recommendation to put all those workdays at the end of June to the tent?
We did that primarily for weather. If they get put up further in the body of the calendar, they, they may get passed. They, they may not be available to us in, in we, for weather. Staff members.
You take it from there?
Yes, yes. If.
You take it from those, that week and a half instead of Easter break or something?
Theoretically, yes, ma'am.
That would give you six, six chances to save spring break.
Oh, wow.
Or you had bad weather.
You still need a day or two to close out school, but yes, that would give you a lot more chances.
That what they wanted?
And in your motion, Mr. Rogers, are you recommending just both of these, given the?
Move both of these to action, because until the state designates whether we're gonna have required workdays or not.
Right.
It really doesn't matter. So we just need to move them to action. These are our Plan A, Plan B.
Thank you. So action item B.
We're not sure if the state's gonna give it.
Calendar 21, 22?
Yeah. I just made the motion. If y'all want to wait, that's fine. I'm just.
That's okay. Is there a second to the motion that's been made? Thank you, Mr. Robertson. All those in favor? Any opposed? So we'll make that action item B. Thank you. So next we have the action agenda. And we have first up the federal fund budget amendment one. Is there any?
Motion to approve federal fund of budget amendment one, so Ms. Moore will have something to do this afternoon.
Okay, I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. All those in favor? Any opposed? So the federal fund budget amendment one passes. Next item is the calendar, 21, 22 calendars that we have. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the 21, 22 calendar as presented with option B and C pending state clarification on the availability of remote dates.
Thank you so much. Is there?
See all that, Pam?
Is there a second to the lengthy motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Next, we have information and announcements.
Board members, you have in your packet upcoming board dates, board dates of your board meetings. We also, quickly approaching spring break and some holidays. Our fifth Friday holiday, of course, is April the 2nd on the traditional calendar, and as well, Early College. One thing I'd like to, to mention, it's not in your information, is the West Stokes High School girls' basketball team are now playing for a regional championship. They are one game away from the state championship. They play at home tomorrow night in the regional final against Shelby. That game starts at 7:00. There is a limit of 250. So if you're interested in a ticket, you need to reach out to Mr. Mabe and/or Mr. Gammons, and they can, can talk with you more about the specifics about a ticket. But if they win tomorrow night, they will play Saturday for the state championship. And we, we're not sure what time.
Somewhere in Randolph County, either Providence Grove High School or Wheatmore High School, they have moved the state championships there. But times are not determined, and the gyms are not determined yet until they have all the finals.
Now, is this game gonna be broadcast on YouTube?
It, every game has been. At some round, the state takes over and they charge until, and I don't know if that's Final Four or the championship game.
It may actually be this game. We can confirm that and let you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Please do, because I mean, I don't want to take a ticket for a parent to see their child.
There should be plenty for parents. That, that's.
Parent or student body.
Right.
Let's put it that way.
Last, for Saturday night, I think I heard them say that they did have a few extra at the gate. So they might have been a couple short of capacity at 2:50. I don't know what will be Tuesday night.
You also have updated calendars that are now reflective of all of the changes that we have had to make due to weather. So that's all that I have for information.
All right. Thank you so much. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion. Go into the close.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Ms. McGee?
We hope everyone has a great day. Thank y'all.
Commercial.